All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Today's date is Monday, December 18th, 2023. The time is now seven o'clock PM, and I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum of council present?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move to prayer and pledge of allegiance by Frank Marr.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Take a few moments to think of the season that we're in, and not the buying of the gifts and the running and going to do all these visits that we have to do, but think of the season of what it is about our Lord coming down here on earth. He knows what he wants us to do, and he's got a plan in each and every one of us, and we've just got to wait until it comes down to us. So I'd ask you during the next few days before his birth comes on here, that you ask him to lead us and guide us on the road where he wants us to go. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, Frank. Let's see, we don't have any presentations, and so we are going to move to a public hearing that we have scheduled for tonight. I now call to order the public hearing to consider the amendment of land use assumptions and capital improvements plan and the imposition of an impact fee. Everyone desiring to speak is allowed five minutes to present your information. The purpose of the hearing is to consider the amendment of land use assumptions and a capital improvements plan and the imposition of an impact fee, and to give any member of the public the right to appear at the hearing and present evidence for or against the update. I would now like to request consultants from Quiddity to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Good evening, council. Yes, so the purpose of the land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and impact fee should be no stranger to all of you, right? This is an existing plan that we have today. So it's merely just an update to our assumptions and the way that we calculate the ability to assess the fees through impact fees. Sorry, I was thrown off. I thought I was a little later. No problem. I wanted just to thank council for allowing me to be here this evening. My hope is that the information is very straightforward. It answers many questions you may have. I do have great pleasure of presenting just because this means a lot to me on this project. I grew up in Jersey Village. I don't know if most of you know that. So that's very dear to my heart, and it's very rewarding to work on a unique project such as this. So thank you for that. So I will do my best not to bore you. Again, this is engineering. This fascinates me and puts others to sleep. But just a quick summary of just what the local government code allows is the impact fees need to be updated every five years if you're going to continue to request and utilize that financial tool. And that's what it is. It is the engine to the train that allows you to basically budget and have finances in order to facilitate the needs for development. The requirement is a public hearing has to be made anytime you have updates, which is why we're here today. And then really, the impact fee itself is looking at any new development, any alterations. So there's different definitions there that describe it, but basically, it's any change to kind of the existing conditions that it is today. Once that is done, the government code allows you to have service units, which is their quantifiable kind of measure of the general use of water and wastewater is what we're talking about today. Once everything is in place, then it allows any new, basically any new development to come in based on what they're going to want to use on a water wastewater side and pay their portion amount of the use that they're going to have in the most simplistic terms. So there is, following this meeting, I will update and sign and seal the final report. I just kind of wanted to pull out the bits and pieces that are relevant that we'll talk through tonight on land use assumptions. We'll cover water wastewater systems and then kind of tie it all in and how that equates to your impact fees. So part of the requirement when you're looking at your, kind of your impact, right, is what is it, how does it affect your population? So it's just some general statistics that I was able to find about the city. There really is stagnant growth in the city, and a lot of that is because the city is built out, right? There's not this lush green field that you're looking to develop, at least everything within the city limits. So when you look at just the growth itself and to kind of correlate the differences, it's on average about 15 people per year is what the population growth will rise. When you compare that with the new development kind of southwest of 290 of what could happen, you see a 0.1% increase changes to a 5%, which is a very rapid growth, right? So part of the exercise is preparing for some of the what-ifs, and that's what this presentation and also the report will allow the city to do. So as it stands today, this is your kind of existing limits that you have. We updated this map to clearly identify and illustrate the different land use types that you see. The gray tracks, if you will pay kind of closer attention to that, just southwest of 290, those are all the undeveloped tracks that it stands today, where they don't have a physical structure. Comparing that to the future, future with a question mark is what I will tell you. We don't know exactly how far out this is. This is just an assumption of some what-ifs, conservative estimates of what we think some of these tracks could turn into based on the developers' tendencies and just kind of the general concept of how things have developed in this area. But you'll see a transition to mixed use, some multifamily. Again, in no means are we trying to dictate this is what the development would be. It's just giving you kind of an idea of what it could be based on some general assumptions that we have. So looking further into the water system, so everything in blue is your current water system as it is today inside the limits of Jersey Village. So some good news, we looked at, you know, existing and future. Right now, as it stands today, the city is in really good shape. You have adequate supply, storage, pressure maintenance. I'm sure you saw that this summer with record heats that we had. The city's facilities did fabulous, right? Now, some of the restrictions was more mandated from the City Houston and other regional providers. But when you're looking at the city system itself, on an average day, a max day, and a peaking hour factors, what the state, the TCQ requires you to have as a regulatory system, it's a testament of good planning, right? Everything worked exactly how we need it to. It's in overall good condition, and we're meeting the existing conditions. So then how does that correlate when you talk about growth? So this table and chart here basically shows you in our assumptions in a five-year period, we're going to get up to a threshold of supply. You will still have adequate storage, pressure maintenance, and all those kinds of things, but what the state requires you on a sense of your actual contract of supply, the city's going to fall a little bit short. So one of the projects is adding a new water facility to get you back up to that threshold, and that's what you see in the kind of the blue system capacity chart there. And then that will continue onward and allow you then in the next five years and looking at a tenure forecast that you would have adequate supply for the projected growth. Predominantly, the highest kind of increase, if you're looking at the different colors, is mixed use, commercial, and industrial. So on the water side, what does that equate to dollars? That's what everyone wants to know. Some interesting items, you know, we've seen a huge increase in the last, I mean, three to four years, really since COVID. So I know it may not be a surprise to most of you, but on the public side of the business, when you're looking at water and wastewater projects with the escalation of materials, supply chain, all these things, it is very common in the industry to see 50 to 75% increases across the board. So the good news is, when you look at your plan, and we compare it from 2020, which was the last time that we updated this, till now, there's no new projects. So everything that we've planned is in accordance to plan. The only thing that was unknown is the cost, right? So right now, when we took a really good look at all of your facilities and tried to give a conservative estimate, you're just shy of $30 million to provide new facilities on the water and wastewater side alone. So on the wastewater, same map, looking at the red system, which is going to be your collection system. Everything on this area, based on kind of the geographic representation and location within the city, is going to go to the Castle Bridge wastewater plant. So that is just kind of on the north side of 290 by the Houston, I guess, Park and Ride. And, you know, good news, right now, you look at kind of the chart that we have, the plant is really low flow. So the state requires you to have different thresholds depending on the average daily flow that you have. The kind of the red line there is your 75% capacity. And what that means is the TCQ says, once you start hitting these marks, you have to start doing planning. You have to start design and start really being proactive to think about what you're going to do on your facility. When you hit the 90% capacity, which is the next line, you've got to be in construction, right? You don't want to be flirting and operating in those lines because it's just, it could lead to failures of making sure that you don't follow your permit and what they call permit excursions. But flowing out 121,000 gallons per day that has a regulated capacity of 800,000 gallons, your plant is in really great shape today. So part of the exercise of what we did is we looked at what if, right? What if these areas change? What if developments come in? What does that look like in a sense of capacity? So we ran some calculations. We looked at gravity, which is going to be your most economical and affordable route to gravity flow it until you can't physically get it there, right? And you have to pick it up into forced man and lift stations. And we came up with this map. So very similar to the last time that this was done. Some tweaks and modifications just to make sure that we're hitting all the properties. We're meeting all the new kind of regulatory requirements and following the design standards. And basically, there's three different areas is what we call kind of your delineation on your wastewater side. So what would happen is everything would gravity flow into a lift station and then be channeled and picked up and forced ultimately to Castle Bridge. So on the cost side, kind of the same economy of scale, everything went up on the pipes, on pumps, and those kinds of things. I do want to direct your attention, there's one new project. S17 is the Castle Bridge wastewater treatment plant expansion. So this is a new project that we identified as a risk and something that we should put within this plan to allow you to have some capacity and start looking at cost. We do think there's some, some things we can look at to help the city, and we're not quite there yet. I'm doing some additional studies to see, can you move some of this wastewater in different areas so you don't have to take a $20 million construction project? But we have to be conservative, right? This is kind of the worst case. If you had to expand to accommodate full development within this area, we put about a price tag of $20 million. If you look at your total amount, that's half. So half of the amount of your CIP is looking at a wastewater plant expansion. On the service unit side, this is another big change. The previous study that we did in kind of the general industry really looked at water meter sizes. And water meter sizes was based on a kind of AWWA standard, based on the use that they would have. They would pay a prorated amount based on that meter. Developers kind of in recent, last couple years, have just took a different approach on how they come up with their equations, still following kind of the engineering standards of showing that they may need smaller meters or multiple meters. And where this was hurting the city, or it could, is if someone would come in with a smaller meter size, saying they needed a smaller capacity, but in essence, they used it at a different duration and was able to kind of make it work, it goes against some of the preliminary kind of the budgets and the numbers that we have in place. So this is a apple-for-apple comparison. When you start to look at service units, again, it's a standard kind of unit that allows us to have a quantifiable number, which is the 250 gallons per day that you see here. And in the planning world, water is about 1,500 gallons per day per acre, and then 80% of that is wastewater because not of it all is used for irrigation or loss or those kinds of things. But that follows in line with what City Houston allows. If you go in as a new developer into the City Houston, they use this very similar 250 gallons per day as a kind of a unit rate threshold that you would have. So the way that it would work is based on the acres that someone would come in at. They would, they would request a certain capacity on your water sewer. The city, then the engineering side, would look at that and then grant them, and they would pay their share for that consumption. So how does it all tie in? Okay, we know that there's construction projects that we need. We know that there's going to be some costs associated with it, and it's gone up. So the gray area is the utilization. And utilization in the sense of these calculations is implying that basically the infrastructure need that's going to happen or going to be needed to supply the development is going to happen within that tenure window, or needed to provide a customer on a line. So it could mean a couple of different things. You may have a line segment, and you may have one customer that's going to redevelop and need it. Well, one out of 20, right? Or it could be two out of 10. So we run these kind of hypothetical situations and really look at, okay, start to play the what-if game. What do we think will happen in this area in the next five years? What do we think will happen in the next 10 years? And that's where the utilization came in. So the higher the utilization, the more likely that you're going to need 100% of that system and those costs to be applied. The lower utilization basically means it's so far out in the distance, we're going to apply a cost, but we're going to put a very small factor on it just because there's such a high degree of unknown. That could change, right? But that's why we do this every five years. So the thought is you're updating your cost and your utilization at least every five years to stay competitive and to make sure that you are doing everything in your power to make sure that the, the financial engine is there to support the development that comes through. So on the wastewater side, very similar. Kind of everything around the 529 Jones Road area is more 90 to 100%. As you get farther east outside in the ETJ areas, you'll see those are much smaller at a 10%, 40% is Castle Bridge. That's the big-ticket cost item, right? But that's at a 40% kind of deduction because we're not saying that whole area is going to redevelop. Only a portion of that's going to be able to utilize the plant, and that's something that we'll look at and find some cost-effective ways. But to be eligible, you take a, basically a 50% deduction on the price, and that's what you're able to apply on capital recovery and impact fees. So this is the most shocking slide, is what I will tell you. And this is a comparison just three years ago, right, at the start of COVID. And you see percentages in the realm of almost 200% of an increase. It's affecting every single municipality across the board. And our hope was prices would stay at the level they're at or go down. But it doesn't seem likely. We did include some inflation numbers to kind of stay just at least with the market, and we're being very conservative in the numbers. But you see there, everything stayed the same on just a kind of a scope of project need, but the dollar amounts increased substantially. So there is total about a difference of close to $40 million when you add in the Castle Bridge wastewater plant, which is a $20 million ticket item. And it gives you some ideas of just what, what the price and what the market is. So where's the good news? Okay? And if I have good news, this is where it's at, is the way that you run the calculations and you look at meter sizes and you compare it with service units, the water number ironically stayed very similar. It was around about it right under an 8% increase from 2020. The biggest ticket item is the wastewater side, and it's Castle Bridge. So that would see a 100% increase in the cost of the fee that someone would have to pay in order to get sewer service. So where does that stand among the greater Houston area? And I think this is the most impactful slide that I can tell you is, the first bar there is your Jersey Village current rates, and you see the proposed rates. They're very similar. The, you know, the red there is the wastewater. There is a pretty significant increase. If you've been following the news at all, you've heard about Tomball, and they're updating their, their impact fees. So those are, at least when I was putting this together, kind of the suggested rates that they had going into this December session, almost double on the water side and almost close to triple on the wastewater side. So when you look at the means of how things are calculated, I'm sure there's a variety of factors why different cities have different amounts. But what I can tell you on the engineering side is planning. The sooner you can plan, and you can forecast, and you can budget for jobs, the more you can kind of put this financial engine roaring. And if you delay it, it's okay. It's just you may end up having then escalate it further down the road to catch up. So, and that's kind of what we may see in just some different areas, not saying, I'm not implying that for Tomball, but it's just, where do you take the risk? Do you take it on in the front and plan? Do you take it kind of midway or take it on the back end? But eventually, the dollars have to come there to supply the infrastructure. All right. And that is my presentation. I'll open it up for any questions.
I just have a, have a couple. One, the service unit is a new concept for, for council. I think the last time we, we talked, it was what you explained before. On one of those slides, you had the basis of the City of Houston standard was a single-family home, I think, implement, and that's where we get the S, the standard SU. A lot of these are commercial developments. I'm guessing, since you presented that, the City of Houston is kind of in line with common engineering thinking around the world, or at least in the United States or Texas?
Yeah, there's a, there's a general basis, kind of a standard, right? And this, I know it's difficult to see, but this breaks it out for number of units. It could be number of restrooms. It's a quantifiable way when you start looking at architecture and engineering and based on just kind of what we're seeing to make sure that they're paying an adequate amount for the, the probability that they're going to use a certain number of waters. Now, just because someone has a toilet doesn't mean that it gets flushed the same amount as another one, right? But on the engineering side, you have to just kind of use the best kind of judgment, and that's kind of what those equivalencies are. And what it does and allows the city is it gives you something quantifiable that you can show developers and say, look, we're being very consistent. Our prices are very fair compared to, you know, other cities. And, and it's just a kind of easier thing to, to digest and for them to estimate as well and budget when looking at making land deals or redeveloping and those kinds of things.
And, and the other one was on the slide where you showed costs and the percentage, like we've talked, it's been a big factor here, the great percentages. I think there was one, though, it was like 5,000%, and we're basing it on what it was, and the impact fee eligible cost in 2020. So are some of those where they were not, not as likely to occur, so the eligibility cost was a lot lower?
For the, the ones that are drastically different, I would say Taylor Road is one of those. What was, was not included was land cost and easements. So take that into consideration with property values that have increased, and then using kind of just basic rule of thumbs on easement wits and those kind of things. There were some tracks that we were able to find that if someone wanted service, in order for the city to provide service, they would need to entertain and get an easement. So those were the biggest costs was really easement acquisition that you would have to budget and plan for, not saying that that's something that wouldn't be needed. But those are another area where you could do some cost-saving metrics, depending on how an area is going to be developed, that you could try to rational about, you know, consolidating or doing some different stuff. But again, that's worst case, and majority of that was easement cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? This item is on the regular agenda for discussion, but it is good if anyone has questions about the presentation. This would be a good opportunity. We still have the public comments as well on this. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one, at least one card that looks like it may be Okay, I do have one, at least one card that looked like it may be related to this particular public hearing. Mr. Peterson, I saw you mention impact fee study. Were you wanting to speak during this public hearing or did you want to speak during just the regular public comment?
Whichever, whichever is going to be viewed.
Okay. We can do regular public comment because it's not really, there's, in case you have something that's not necessarily related to this particular study, then it would be a little easier, so.
Part of the study, part of it is not.
Okay, we can, I'll let you speak during the public comment period, regular public comment period, just so that you're not having to worry about staying germane to just this.
If I could, if I would like to speak before you vote comment in the top section?
It will be before we vote on anything, yes. Okay. And I did not show any other comment cards pertaining to this particular public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. There being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing to consider the amendment of land use assumptions and a capital improvements plan and the imposition of an impact fee. That does bring us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the city council will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the city council. And I'll go ahead and right off the top, Dennis Peterson.
If I could diverge from the topics just a second, I'd like to mention a couple of things. One is sitting back there by my wife is one of our newest Jersey Village residents, who is Matt Davidson, and his wife, Ale, moved into Jill Mandell's Hills, if you knew where that was. So I'm glad he's here for his first meeting. Appreciate that.
Citizen of the future.
Citizen of the week. Second thing is, is that I'd like to thank whoever's involved in this, that Little Kitchen will be perhaps working or at the golf course. What a vast improvement that will be. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So that's a little off the record that time of year. First, I know on the impact fee and the capital improvements program, that is a giant undertaking. And I know there's a lot of work involved, not only the consultants, but obviously by the council, the staff, and even the committee that was set up to do it. And we do thank you for your time and effort. I'm pretty aware of what most of you are being paid, so you more than earned your keep, is all I can say. You know, my detailed comments on the impact and CIP were sent to you earlier. I noted some questionable assumptions in the report, and I couldn't quite understand why some of the cost estimates between 2020 and 23, 2023, almost tripled. You know, essentially, it went from 25 million to 69 million. I'm sure there were some increases, but just hard for me to understand. I also understand that the impact fee could amount to somewhere even close to 50% of a project cost for a new connection. I'm just a little concerned about who pays for the other 50% and how that actually happens. And I'm sorry, I'm an engineer. It's an occupational problem that we have, but I have a lot of questions. You know, I also recognize that the capital improvements plan is fluid, and it's going to change with new circumstances, assumptions, and even information. All that to say, I do not oppose the impact fee study. I know it's necessary to maximize the city's collections for the new water and wastewater connections we're going to have. So I just want to be clear that I do not oppose it. I also understand that you're prevented from discussing economic development activities in the ETGA that you're scheduled to vote on on April 24th. And I can only guess at this point what that might be. But it kind of leads to a bigger concern, and that's understanding the intent of council to annex additional properties south of 290 or perhaps in the ETJ. You know, that to me is really the big issue, is that it's a big financial impact for residents as well as perhaps changing the character and the makeup of the city. So as we move further, I'm very interested in how the policy decision of the council goes versus some of the individual decisions. I do have a recommendation that may help and may not in some of the defining the future character of Jersey Village. One thing I might recommend is that we hold a referendum in May, binding or non-binding, to help us substantiate our citizens' interest in annexing or serving property down there, just to get an idea for what the citizenship thinks about that. You know, we can all look at the financials and the social and environmental impacts of those long-term decisions. And so I thought that may be one option if there were a referendum to be put on the May, a clear referendum to put on the May elections. So that's the extent of my comments. Thank you for your time. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Can I respond?
You can go right ahead.
And this is just kind of statement of fact and clarification regarding where the 50%. It's, if it doesn't come with the impact fee, it has to come from somewhere, right? So it comes from water rates. Part of that goes to pay for the water. Part of that goes to pay for maintenance, and the other part goes to pay for, pay for future CIP projects. I think, in fact, we might have talked about that last week with talking about, and the other part, or could come from bonding, which then still would have to be paid for by water rates, et cetera. So that's where the other 50% comes from. Why it's 50%, I think that's state law, and that's what's limiting there.
Got it. Thank you.
The next comment card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
I'm Rick Faircloth, 1601 Lakeview. I know we had a meeting last week on Monday about the water and sewer rates. I didn't get any specific notification because your newsletter came in the water bills, and they actually arrived two days after the meeting was. And I know you don't have any control over the, but when you have something, it seems like there could be to get this out a little bit earlier. Whether there were any notices on the bulletin boards, I don't remember seeing any. But I know that I wanted to come to that, and it wasn't until one or two days later I saw the water bill, and I said, whoop, missed it by two days. So just trying to, for scheduling and making sure things get out and, you know, more quicker. So especially when there are important things like this. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Rick. Sometimes I always wonder whether to include something that might be in the first part of the month, not knowing exactly when that newsletter goes out. So I took a shot, and unfortunately, I guess it just didn't quite make it. But we will try to make sure that we're making, spreading the word a little bit more, although I think we did have a couple of other areas where we advertised it. At least the turnout was pretty good. I think we almost had a full house, so. Yeah, thank you, Rick. Next card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and city council, well, first, my name is Jim Fields. Live 16413 St. Hillier. And thank you, mayor and city council, for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. The first thing I want to say, mayor, I want to commend you on the water session meeting. It was extremely productive. And I liked the idea that you adjusted the rules to allow the citizens to ask questions and get answers to them. Thank you again for that. And I also liked the fact that you didn't let it run on too long because we would have been there midnight. So you managed it very well, and I commend you on that. And hopefully, that same format could be used here, utilized in the city council meetings. Moving on here, this is on the consent agenda number four, Resolution 202366. It says appointing an emergency management coordinator and assistant management coordinator. I just like to know, are those going to be more people being hired? I'm just curious. Then on consent agenda number six, which is the 202368, having to do with the community ratings system, repetitive loss, otherwise known as RLA. I was looking at, it was interesting. It showed seven, section seven, eight, and nine were areas that had repetitive flooding. And I can't remember, you know, been here since 1990, ever flooding on Seattle. And the other one is over, I think, off of, next to the high school. But the one that was really kind of odd was, I can't believe, it's a Parks and Jersey Village, the one right over here off of Village Drive, I guess, Catty Corner to Harbor Freight. They claimed that that was in a flood area. I don't ever remember flooding there. But another thing I noticed by looking at the actual graph, that the land that we purchased, it had a blue streak going right in the middle of it, which means that is, that is in a flooding area, which is concerning. And what is also makes me wonder here, the traffic signal on Jones has been lifted almost four and a half feet. It was at ground level. So that's kind of telling me that whole area, if we're planning development, is going to be subject to flooding. And I'm surprised, I know that's not in the repetitive loss area analysis, but it was concerning. Which brings into the terrace number two. Mayor, if I've asked repeatedly, I don't understand why this last time we had two policemen ushering people away from the doors of the meeting, which is very telling. If that information is that critical, then that should be known to the citizens. And there's, I don't know what reason that it should be withheld and that should be made public because that would allow others to participate. And I believe the more people that participate, the better we can serve the citizens and make our city better. And because one thing, it's still talking about more apartments in the area. I like how it's called multi-use. We never say apartments. It's multi-use. We don't need any more apartments as we know the impact it has on our EMS system. And moving on here, the codes, I want to say, I did report there's a big hole at Highway 290 and 529, and they do have a little fence around it. So, thank you, Austin Police. But there's, it looks like there's a broken water main. And you all saw the email. I said it was in front of the Ford dealership. And then I was requested to come back with, we need to have more, the coordinates of precise location. I think that's just completely absurd. I don't understand that. It's right over here, right in front of the Ford dealership. It's not out in the middle of, you know, middle of a desert somewhere. But it looks like a substantial water leak, and I hopefully you'll look into it. And is there anything else going? Yes, one last thing. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Merry Christmas. Last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 27th installment, Jersey Village spent 1996 adjusting to a vizier world. Our family-friendly village did not have just neighbors but had in-laws, such as on Everybody Loves Raymond, proposed rezoning of the golf course that Happy Gilmore would have loved to play on, and backyard neighbors counting blue cars at the Joe Myers Ford dealership. The Village Drive speed limit, curvature, and ease of access from 290 and Jones Road continue to be a safety hazard for the townhome residents, which prompted another traffic study that eventually allowed for the speed limit to be reduced from 30 to 25 miles per hour between Rio Grande and Village Green. Several stop sign placements were requested, such as Capri at Tahoe and Argentina at Mollaw. The 40th anniversary for Founder's Day planning was underway with several children-friendly attractions and live musical performers hosted by a local country and western radio channel. A lot of work was prepared for the history booth, and an old porcelain cowl that used to be displayed on Jersey Drive would be there. A contest to pick a little Mr. and Mrs. Jersey Village from entrance of kindergarten through fifth grade by writing an essay of why they liked living in Jersey Village was new. Residents that backed along the Joe Myers Ford dealership brought up disturbances such as loud music, paging system volume, car paint fumes, trash receptacles, and security lighting as disruptive. Representatives from the dealership participated in efforts to improve conditions for everyone with challenges of the church's easement and a pipeline, so special butterfly-shaped visual blockers were placed in the fence, plus shrubbery and trees were planted with assistance of three Boy Scouts. The size, cost, usage, and upkeep of a community center was heavily discussed over the year, with placement proposed near the Clark Henry Park pool. Questions on how to pay for this prompted a resident to say, we need a meeting room facility or something to attract good citizens to Jersey Village. And he does not mind paying more taxes for something to benefit and increase the quality of people. The police department was praised by a councilman for two officers quickly arresting and safely recovering the weapon used to rob the McDonald's of cash. In a different incident, the fire chief said a sprinkler system put out a fire, saving the property before they arrived on scene. Due to the summer drought, well water levels were not functioning for the daily demand, so a workaround for the depth level was authorized, and elimination of outside water usage was put in place for a period of time. New technology was considered, such as having a website on the internet for Jersey Village, and contracting for a city hall to have voicemail as part of their telephone system. Approval was given for a financial collection to place a small plaque below Carol Fox's monument to memorialize her daughter Megan, who passed away in June, just 12 days before her 12th birthday. This was an act of compassion by our citizens for Jersey Village's legacy of superb city staff. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Kimberly. Merry Christmas. Okay, those are all of the comment cards that I have. That brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Police.
Mayor, councilors, the reports before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city manager from council?
Based on the last citizen's comment, one sprung to mind about steps. I think we had a, someone in the last, maybe a November meeting, talked about Carol Fox Park and destroying the sidewalk. And in the last weekly email update, there was an update on that. I don't know if Robert can share that with everyone on steps we're taking regarding the sidewalk?
Yes, I can update you. I'm just going to read it verbatim. Okay. Presenting the weekly report, I basically stated, I have a plan to meet with Ms. Elliott to learn about the history of Carol Fox, gather her ideas on how we can honor those who set the foundation for the initial improvement back in the 90s. I will explore ways in which we can bring them back to continue their legacy with this improvement, as well as open the opportunity for new residents to get involved. We do not plan to upset any residents who have a sidewalk slab of the park and would consider the best path forward to cement their contribution and improve slash preserve their contribution with the future playground improvements. I will be working on that into the next week and end of January.
Fantastic. Look forward to hearing the results of that.
Any other questions from council regarding the city manager's report? Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration in the regular agenda? And I will say, just because the question was brought up, the emergency coordinator, is that going to result in hiring anyone new? No, those existing employees would be appointed to those roles. If no one wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I may have to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to the regular agenda, item H1, Consider Resolution Number 2023-69, Appointing Members to Serve as Directors on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number Two for the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, it's time to reappoint members to the terrace board number two. We're looking at positions one, two, and six for the term beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. through December 31, 2025. I did contact the members who are currently serving on that board to ask about their desire for reappointment. John Beckham and Ty Camp stated that they did desire reappointment. Ashley Hart, who serves in position six, said that she does not desire reappointment. I did receive applications from three individuals, Charles Butler, Cynthia Copanitz, and Rick Faircloth. And this item is to make those appointments for positions one, two, and six.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this.
I would like to reappoint the two desire reappointment, and I would suggest Cynthia Copanitz, I can't speak today, for appointment to replace Ashley Hart.
Do we not just appoint Cynthia to another board? Do we appoint Cynthia Copanitz to the?
Actually, all of the people who have applied are currently serving on other boards.
Got it.
They're all good picks. Everybody's got lots of time in the city and has been very active. The only real differences that I saw at this point were actually gender, and I think Ashley is one of the only females on that committee. And so I was replacing her with another female.
I like that idea. Being a fellow female.
I definitely don't disagree. I will also mention that Rick Faircloth has quite a bit of experience, which is always something, and I'm not saying the others don't, but I do know Rick has a significant amount of experience even with heading, leading, chairing, I guess is the right word, a group.
Yeah, from a observation standpoint, from the, as the P and Z liaison, I've seen all three inactions. Cynthia was at her first meeting, so she's had 100% attendance. But Rick runs that committee very well, and Charles is an active participant as well. So I think all three are fine participants.
I do think on this particular board, there is a bit more experience needed. So I would be in favor of Rick Faircloth as well.
Sounds like we've got two people mentioning Rick, one mentioning Cynthia.
I have no problem with Rick. I think he'd be a good, strong addition to that committee as well, board.
Okay. Sounds like we've got three people who are advocating for Rick Faircloth. Does someone want to make a motion?
I've also put weight on, if you want to be on a committee, you should go to the meeting where the appointment happens. So that helps that out. I'm going to move that we approve Resolution 2023-69, appointing the two incumbents in Rick Faircloth.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Rick. All right, that, and to the other two, the other two members for reappointment. That brings us to item H2, Consider Resolution Number 2023-70, Appointing Members to Serve as Directors on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number Three for the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, so this is the appointments to the terrace board number three. We're looking at reappointments to positions one, two, three, and four for the term that begins January 1, 2024, and ends December 3, 1, 2025. And I did call all the members that are currently serving, William Radcliffe, Michael Stenbridge, and Jessica Modrano, all desire reappointment. And the person serving in position three, Sylvia Perry, had resigned her position several months ago, so that left position three vacant. Unfortunately, there are no applications for any interested people, so we would be looking at appointments to positions one, two, three, and four.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
And fortunately, there's less than 100 people in the city that qualify for this committee, and so I'd recommend we just reappoint and leave vacant, and hopefully someone steps forward.
Just to be clear for everybody out there, if I'm saying this properly, for to be on this tier, involved in this tiers committee, you have to live within that specific area, correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
And by leaving it vacant, we probably do no harm to quorum, and we can proceed until we get a applicant or set of applicants.
It's a seven-member board, so I mean, with the three there, you'll have at least the two extras, and so you have quorum.
Yeah, I think we did have one meeting where we came pretty close to not having a quorum. So we would like someone to step forward and fill that vacant seat, but unfortunately, I don't think anyone here today qualifies.
Lori, there is an applicant in here, in this packet, Ron D'Amico. He currently serves on the board.
And we did reach out to everybody in the zone and let them know we had the opportunity and asked them to apply. We had one person express interest, but they didn't submit an application yet.
Well, if it remains vacant, then maybe someone, if they do submit later on, then that'll present an opportunity for us to consider it. All right, unless there's any further discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-70, reappointing the incumbents and leaving the position three vacant.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H3, Consider Ordinance Number 2023-31, Adopting Updated Land Use Assumptions, a Capital Improvements Plan, and Impact Fees for Water and Wastewater Facilities in accordance with Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code, Making Certain Findings Related to the Subject and Providing For Severability. Austin Police, City Manager.
Mayor, councilors, we had the presentation already. We've had the public hearing, and everybody had their chance to speak on that. The next step would be for the council to discuss and take appropriate action.
Thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I thought the presentation was fairly straightforward. It is very interesting to see how much costs have gone up. I think we're all feeling that, so I think what was presented is reasonable to move forward with.
I agree. I also wanted to say, I wanted to thank you for presenting it in a manner to which it makes, the most sense is with something that is so complicated as that. Yeah. That was great.
Yeah, regarding costs, when Austin brought up, I think in May, that the cost of a street infrastructure was three and a half times what it was in 2019. It was hard to believe, but after obviously experiencing inflation and just going to the grocery store, but 30 cents or 30% is a lot different than 300 or 200%. So when you see a percentage up there, 200% means it's gone up three times what it used to be, and it's scary. It really is from a budgeting standpoint, because, you know, we have to take different approaches to things. But I'm proud of the city for how it's planned in the past, and that we're prepared for these projects, or at least know that they may be coming. And so they've been on the CIP, they've been on these things, and they just haven't become necessary. But we're aware that they may become necessary, so I think proper planning is a great step forward in the right direction.
And I very much agree with the comment that you made around, you know, the longer that we postpone things, the more significant some of the actions will need to be, and how much more expensive it will be. I've seen earlier in my tenure on council, projects get postponed that we are now dealing with today, that's significantly more expensive and significantly more complex to deal with. So I'm very much in favor of planning ahead.
Yeah, I will, this always bears repeating, although I think it was kind of pointed out during the presentation, for anyone who's looking at these numbers and saying that's a lot of money, some of these things may come to fruition at some point in the future. We don't know when. A lot of them may never come to fruition, or if they do, maybe it's not for 20, 30 years. The whole idea simply is you need to be prepared when someone does come along and says, I would like to build XYZ in your city, or in your extraterritorial jurisdiction, and I'm interested in consenting to annexation, and they want to talk about impact fees. This is the reason why we went out and decided to have this study updated earlier than we had to, was because had they come to us and we quoted them impact fees based on the old study, we would have significantly shorted ourselves as far as their contribution to that. And so this just confirms the wisdom of going out and getting this done sooner, because that's, those are some big differences in the numbers. So I was very glad that we went out and got these done in case these opportunities come up. But again, no, no, there's no near-term plans to do any of these things right away, but you never know when someone may want to. So any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move to adopt Ordinance 2023-31.
Second.
Thank you. Ordinance, not resolution. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item H4, Consider Resolution 2023-71, Authorizing the City Manager to Negotiate an Agreement with Little Kitchen HTX for the Concessionaire Services in the Jersey Meadow Golf Course Clubhouse. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As we progress towards the completion of our new golf course clubhouse, staff published a request for proposals for concessionaire to operate in the new facility. A request for expressions of interest was posted August 25th with hopes of spreading awareness pertaining to the opportunity to gather information from interested parties to use that information to create the formal request for proposals. Staff received no responses to this request. The RFP was posted on the city website November 1st and in the newspaper on November 15th and November 22nd. In addition to the standard requirement for RFP publication, staff sent out emails to a plethora of local businesses to spread word of this opportunity. The list of businesses we contacted is highlighted in the packet. We also forwarded this to other contacts and staff that have known people within the restaurant industry, and we were told that they forwarded this proposal to them. We don't have a list of those exact businesses, of course. The list of companies that downloaded the packet from BidNet are listed in the packet as well. The BidNet platform provides an ongoing Q&amp;A platform that was open November 1st through November 21st at 2:00 p.m. No questions were submitted for clarification. This platform provides the opportunity for a public forum to clarify and answer any project-specific questions vendors may have. Aramark requested a site visit opportunity for interested vendors via email, so we added an addendum that was added to the posting on November 14th notifying all document holders of the opportunity to tour the facility November 29th at 2:00 p.m. None of the document holders attended the tour. Three responses were timely submitted, and a team of city staff consisting of Austin Police, city manager, golf manager Matt Jones, and myself were assembled to review and rank the responses. The criteria respondents were evaluated on or as follows, quality of submittal requirements to questions outlined in Section 9 of the RFP, quality of the business plan proposed to accomplish the scope of work, quality of staff assigned to the clubhouse, compensation to be paid to the city, complete proposal submittal, proposed menu and pricing, and interviews. Staff collaborated and scheduled separate interviews with all three submittals to gather information from each proposal, clarify any questions the businesses had pertaining to the opportunity, and to gather more information on the vision they had for this facility. Taking into account all the information in the proposals, as well as the information gathered in the interview process, staff is unanimous that Little Kitchen HTX will be the best partner for us to move the golf course forward with the vision of the city. They expressed their desire to have a casual upscale dining opportunity for the community while still being able to provide the grab-and-go menus that golfers needed. They have a background in providing quality food as a restaurant, along with the experience of catering large corporate events. The next step would be negotiating a concessionaire contract that meets all the requirements that the city has for this amenity to meet our expectations. Our recommended action would be to approve Resolution Number 2023-71, authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement with Little Kitchen HTX for the concessionaire services in the Jersey Meadow Golf Course Clubhouse.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I'm really excited. Little Kitchen came up. It's going to be pretty awesome to see what they do there.
I just want to confirm that, I'm fully aware that we have the opportunity for people to request for clarification, and I just want to confirm, it is in the packet, but I want verbal confirmation that there were no requests for clarification in any of the rules, statements, anything within the packet?
Correct. Yeah, no questions were posted in the forum, and if staff is contacted with a question, we advise them to do that in the public forum, so that way we can answer it, because we have to answer it with all of them at the same time.
How long, or what's the term of the agreement? Is that negotiable, or what's the length?
Yes, the initial discussion was, and the RFP was five years, Austin, 16 months, I believe, but that is all negotiated in the agreement and will be brought back to council.
I will say, I think this, I mean, their experience lines up so perfectly with the kind of the concept we had with the golf course, that I, as soon as I found out, you know, after everything had closed up they had bid, I was like, that sounds like an amazing opportunity. And if you've never been to Little Kitchen right over here, the food is just, I mean, it's really, really good, and it's affordable for the quality of the food. And so to be able to combine that with the golf course clubhouse, and I'm just going to be very excited to see what they do. So yeah, that's a big one for us.
And they seem very successful down at Rice University. They're in the pavilion there, and they seem to do, they're very popular with the students, and it's that same, I'll call it that concept, where they have people, you can come in and stay, but they're also, do the quick service, which I do understand falls on line with what we're looking for with the golf course.
Exactly, exactly. All right, if not any further discussion?
I was just going to compliment Robert and his team on, you know, contacting, a wide net, if you will, of, there's some very recognizable names on the list of businesses contacted, and additional businesses that were, you know, contacted after the initial reach out. So, or the ones that requested the packet. So, you know, it wasn't by default by any means. It was, there's a lot of businesses in Houston, which is a foodie town, so I'm excited to see what Little Kitchen can do.
Okay, if there's not any further discussion, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-71.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H5, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Regarding the City's Pool. Robert Bassford, Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, Council, during the November 27, 2023 meeting, the council discussed the bond results and requested that a discussion pertaining to the city pool be placed on this agenda tonight. During the November meeting, council discussed- During the November meeting, council discussed the maintenance budget amount they would like to place into the pool. While the pool can currently operate safely and within code, it can be subject to a malfunction or break that could result in a quick decision to repair or close the pool. The issue with renovating the pool is that there are only so many repairs we can make before we need to increase compliance. With the pool being built when it was, we were grandfathered into a different set of codes than those that would regulate a brand-new pool. Staff is actively working with Landmark Aquatics to compile an in-depth maintenance report combined with research to identify where that compliance threshold becomes a factor. As of this writing, the pool would need resurfacing and coping at a cost of roughly $120,000. Resurfacing is usually completed every 10 to 15 years. There was record of a pool renovation in 2009. Staff did repair some cracks in 2020 and replaced the coping in 2021, but these repairs have not lasted as long as staff had hoped. Other repairs just as of this writing that were needed were, you know, plumbing, drains, pump house, chemical storage, chemical application, and electrical components beyond the breaker. Based upon the feedback received from council to this point, the current plan of action for staff would be to maintain the pool like we normally would. However, if there is anything that would cause us to go over budget on our current pool maintenance line item, that would be the threshold to stop maintaining. If council would like to provide alternative direction on this, staff is open to that. In the event that a malfunction occurs that would require a large repair or permanent closure, council could consider a prorated, we could break it down by cost per day refund to all patrons that have purchased the season pass. Recommended action, staff is just requesting direction from council pertaining to the issues outlined in the agenda item request.
Discussion amongst council.
So you're telling me in 2021, we replaced coping, which is part of what you're asking for us to go ahead and do again, even though it's typically only done every 10 to 15 years?
Um, clarification. So we're not requesting a replace of coping, the coping is just do again. The resurfacing of the pool surface, that is every 10 to 15 years, and that, we believe, was last done in 2009.
Gotcha, okay, but, so it says resurfacing and coping, but then it says coping was done in 2021. I'm just trying to understand the...
Yes, so the resurfacing is the pool surface on the bottom. The coping is the deck that, the end of the deck that touches the pool around the perimeter of the pool. That portion, both of them are combined $120,000. The coping portion was just recently done and has begun to show some signs of wear and tear, typically indicative of a rising pool, typically.
So the issues are because we are continuously having the same problems, right?
Yes, yes, essentially, yeah.
You mentioned Landmark is going, and staff are working on a list of maintenance report, I'm assuming with possible estimates, and there's a threshold there for compliance, which is a whole different issue that, you know, adds to the fury of all this. When do we expect that to be completed?
So we have an onsite assessment this week. We're aware of the issues. We're just trying to draw that compliance line, and so we're gonna walk through it once more again, identify all the problems, and try to relate that to the specific code. And we're gonna have to look to understand that code and get some clarification on, will this require us to become compliant across other aspects of the code?
I just want to make extremely clear, we're not asking for a research, we're not asking for a nine and a half million dollar bond, which is what we did last November, to repair something that would have taken $100,000 to resurface.
Correct.
Okay, I don't know if that was made clear to everyone outside of council.
It could be a snowballing effect. Could be a snowballing effect. One project could require the improvement of another, which would require the improvement of another, and if at any point I believe we hit the plumbing, that would require improvement of it all.
And the code written in 1970, mid-'70s, when the pool was, is a lot different than what it is in 2023?
Yes, absolutely.
By that, it's also a lot more expensive to move up to that code, unless you started differently.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You hinted there that you're looking at several things, but there are some underlying root causes that are going to be too expensive. You said if we hit the plumbing, that's it, we're, there's nothing that's gonna be too expensive?
Yeah, so essentially, we have lights and the electrical, you have to find the electrical, which require the deck, and then, like you said, if there's a plumbing, then you have to add the new drain and adding a drain, and that's where we're trying to really create this report and compare it to the code and draw that threshold. But yes, there's, we could trigger a point that Landmark mentioned that we would have to become compliant, and she said, "As of now, ours is really early on, high up in the step-by-step."
When we get that, will that have the, I can't believe, "If you give a mouse a cookie" came to my mind, but anyway, it, uh, prerequisites, right? So if we do this, then we might have to do this, and if we do that, or in order to do this, we have to do these other things.
Yes, correct, and we're gonna get some OPCs, and they mentioned discomfort in doing these projects, for sure.
Can I ask for clarification on, I had a citizen ask me about if our pool was rising or sinking, and I am not a pool owner. I am fully aware of that pools do come out of the ground and things like that, and some of, but can you clarify this a little more for me, please?
And there's no exact evidence that shows that it's rising, but typically the coping and the decking is popping up, you know, that's indicative of some type of rising, nothing too drastic, but like I said, just the surface in general is tough.
I said it last time, and I'll say it again, I don't have interest in dumping good money after a bad problem.
I think we've budgeted for a maintenance, and I'm comfortable spending up to maybe that amount, and maybe if we see what those line items are, we can edit that slightly, but I'm with Jen on that. I'd like to make it into this summer and see where we go, but who knows?
I think it's gonna be a money pit. It's like renovating an old house, the more that you pull back and unpeel, I mean, the more that you find out is wrong and that you have to replace. So I, I think we limp along as long as we can until we hit a significant item, and then we reevaluate at that point in time.
I'd like to see that report, too. Like, as much detail as possible with what it would cost and what we're looking at as far as what has to come up to, if we fix A, we have to come up to code with B, and then what that would cost, and like the whole "give a mouse a cookie" situation.
Would you always like it on the agenda or just in the monthly report next month?
I think that could just come in a report. What I was gonna ask is, down here, talked about refunding. I guess that tied in your question. What I was gonna say is, great work talking to Landmark. I think that's gonna be very beneficial, so appreciate that. Refunding. Prorating per day, sounds like a great idea. Do we need to adjust an ordinance for that? Is, so that would have to come back next week, or is that something you can do with just direction? I thought that would have to be written.
So it'd probably depend on the contract you have with them. So, and again, I don't know the setup of that deal, but my guess is you have some kind of contract with these...
We don't have a contract with anybody.
It's citizens, they pay $100 or X amount of dollars for their pass.
But that's an ordinance, right, already?
Yeah, it's an ordinance, so it's a fee.
Whoever's fees we follow that, and if you don't have any kind of determined fee, then we can either amend the ordinance to do that or work out some kind of payment schedule that...
Yeah, I think we're probably gonna end up having to enable you to do a refund. So it's coming back anyway.
Yeah, we were fully thinking that if we were to do a refund of some sort, it would come back to council. We weren't, I was kinda planning to bring it to council when it happens, but if you wanna be proactive and do it before then, we could, but...
What are the, what are the terms on the, like, is it a date and time that people have to get their permits? Or just whenever, so you...
Combine whenever, yeah.
I, I think since we're already close to, hey, do we have an agenda item for Landmark's report, or do we send it in an email? It would not be difficult to pick a number for prorating. I think we go ahead and do that. That way people can make an informed decision when they're buying a pool pass. It also puts it right up there of, hey, this pool has issues, and we are not guaranteeing that you are gonna be able to use the pool all the way through the swim season. We're telling you right now, this pool is probably not gonna make it.
I think, I think James is right on that. I think, go ahead and get it all out, get it, get it in print, so everybody can make an informed decision beforehand.
Instead of, maybe instead of doing a refund policy, I mean, it's your prerogative to do that, or we could just adopt a policy. Maybe the next meeting, we have a refund policy for that, just to include, in case, I mean, in case the thing does survive, then we wouldn't have to mess with that, but just have the policy adopted, so that way in case something goes down, you can...
I'm gonna just be real interested to see if this, if I were a teenager looking for a job for the summer, and I didn't know whether or not that pool that I might apply to be a lifeguard at was gonna stay open the whole season, would I apply? That's gonna be the other issue.
What if we could make their job description say lifeguard at all, and then they can just go work in, like, maintenance grounds?
We just posted a lifeguard position just recently, actually, and it's in the middle of winter. I was gonna say that I am surprised you think people of that age watch these meetings.
Touche, that's point well taken. Any other discussion on this item? I, just for me personally, I, I think it's just gonna have to be kind of a, as, as things move along, we'll, we'll just have to see what the costs are and make a decision as a council. But yeah, it's not great. Any other discussion on this item? I assume, did staff get the direction they needed regarding the pool? Okay. If there's nothing else, we go ahead and move along then. All right. That brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down on this end with Councilmember Shepherd.
I don't have much, other than I hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilmember Lawson?
She stole my thunder. Happy, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everyone. Have a safe travels or safe stays, and have a great start to 2024.
Councilmember Singleton?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Remember Christmas Eve, 2 to 4. Keep your front door open, listen to the noise, go see Santa out in the street. Thanks to the fire department.
Councilmember Craig?
I'd like to say Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. I also wanted to thank everybody that attended the work session. I thought that was, while clearly, everybody doesn't agree, I do believe working together makes government better, and I think it's important that everybody is involved and everybody shares their opinions, even if I think they're bad.
All right. Well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. Stay safe out there. I know the police department has already made people aware, you know, you gotta keep an eye out for, I guess you'd say porch pirates, people who like to, you know, take things of opportunity. There's a lot of Amazon packages out there, and just make sure you're keeping an eye out for that. And keep an eye out for each other, because that's the best way to avoid an issue like that. Okay. With that, we are going to move into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:18 p.m. pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney, and Section 551.074, Deliberations Concerning Personnel Matters in Connection With The Following Items. Item 1, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, Section 551.071, Consultations With Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village, Ters number 2, and economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase exchange or value of real property related thereto. And Item 2, pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, deliberate the appointment of election judges for the city of Jersey Village. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. The closed session was adjourned at 8:44 PM, and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Item M1, discuss and take appropriate action on items discussed in the executive session regarding information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village To Locate In Jersey Village Terre Number Two, And Economic Development Negotiations Including The Possible Purchase-Exchange Or Value Of Real Property Related There Too. There is no action to take, and so therefore, meeting adjourned. Thank you.